Good morning. This is Ronnie Hardaway. Welcome to the Village of Lansing Board of Trustees meeting for October 3, 2022. My first order of business is to call the meeting to order and to do a roll call. Carolyn Greenwald.
Here.
Susan Ainsley.
Here.
Pat O'Rourke.
Yeah.
Ronnie Hardaway is here. Jeff Dobbin is attending remotely, but because of the open meetings law, he cannot candid or can he vote on any of our decisions tonight? Thank you for joining, Jeff.
You're welcome.
My next order of business is public comment period. We have several public participants this evening, and if you're here to speak on any topic that is not on our agenda tonight, please step up to the stand here and give us your name and address and speak. Seeing no one, I'll move that we close the public comment period.
I'll second.
Carolyn seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we have to approve minutes from September 15 and 19. Everyone was here except Pat, correct?
I was not here.
Yeah, she wasn't here. We have to do them separate.
Okay.
I thought Jeff was absent on the 19th.
Okay.
He sh- no, he showed up at the Thursday meeting. He was not at the...
Okay.
Right, but he's not here anyway.
Yeah. Okay, so I will move that we accept the September 15 meetings, September draft meeting minutes.
I will second.
Carolyn seconds. All those in favor who attended the meeting, say aye. Aye. Can't have a quorum, can we?
No, you don't.
We don't. We'll have to vote again. And for September 9, I will also move then that we vote for the September 19 draft meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Carolyn seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Work for either one? Oh, no.
You weren't either.
I'm there from the Monday night.
You were here Monday.
Yeah, you are. You had just gotten back. Yeah, you were here.
Oh, oh, right, right, yes.
Which ones are?
So you vote against...
I was here for the 15th.
No, you are not here for the 15th. You were here for the Thursday meeting.
15, 19 comes after 15, doesn't it?
So why should I stand?
All right, okay. We have a quorum for that then. We can accept the 19th. We'll have to move the September 15 meeting minutes to our next meeting where we can get a quorum of people who attended it.
And I have to stand for the 19th. I was elected.
Again, welcome back. Okay, so we'll move the September 15 meeting minutes to our next meeting. It's okay, Carol. So our next topic is to continue the public hearing for proposed local law F, Amendment to Village Lansing, Village of Lansing Code zoning law to replace a section on tree conservation. I would move, or I guess we may not move, that public hearing is continued from our last meeting, so is there anyone here to speak on this particular law? Simon, why don't you step up and ask your name?
Simon Mo, former Village resident and trustee. So I was just here to answer any questions that anyone might have about the local law. I did watch the last meeting just on the YouTube channel, and there were some questions about ownership and whether this had anything to do with climate impact communities. So I just thought I'd be here just in case there were those kinds of questions that I could answer those questions, because I primarily authored the document.
Thank you, Simon.
Ronnie, this is Mike Baker. Same as Simon, I'm here to help answer any questions that you might have that are kind of a result of what happened after Simon left the Board of Trustees and the planning board kind of finished this out to make the recommendation to the trustees.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else?
Oh, can I ask them some questions, or does not yet?
Let's make sure that everyone has spoken first, who would like to speak on this. Don.
Don Hartill, 896 Hugh High Street, former mayor. I really have a lot of problems with this proposal, as I've written to you.
Yes.
I'm thinking about the simplest thing to do was to just say a clear cut has to have authorization from planning board and the board of trustees and be done with it.
This is related to any tree removal?
Yes.
Okay.
Clear cut is... Otherwise, it has terribly severe legal limitations in terms of what property owners can do with their property.
Thank you, Don, and thank you for the letter. Jody sent us a copy of that letter, and we'll include it with our minutes for this meeting. I'm just making notes to my set here. Anyone else? I will move that we close the public hearing. I need a second.
Second.
Susan Ainsley seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing is closed. Now we can open up. We need to discuss now this particular law, Carolyn, so I will move the resolution to accept this local law F as part of our code, and we'll now have a discussion on that before we vote on the resolution.
Okay.
You guys have some questions?
Yeah, I wanted to start at the beginning and talk about the basis for the law, what kind of research we did into, you know, similar laws, and kind of when we get into the decisions regarding the numbers. So... I mean, I guess, yeah, let's start with what your goals were or are. What are your goals?
So we'll be starting with basically what happened after the end of Dark Drive and clear cutting, where that currently, where the pond is, and we're moving out there and crossing through with a clear cut. And then next door to Alio, perhaps it's that section that got clear cut. And so it was just, it actually, it actually started with the Nissan dealership, and when they were talking about like putting in all the lights there, I went up and down Dark Drive to speak for instance about what they thought of what was going to Nissan and would they be bothered by that.
No one cares. I remember.
Everybody cared about what was happening with the clear cutting of these lots, and I'm really upset about it. So I just started thinking that perhaps there needs to be a law where you just go into a lot and just cut down all the trees with no plan for what's going to go in there, and that resonated with...
That resonates with everybody.
It resonated with other board members of other boards, both on the zoning field and the planning board. So then I took it from there and just drafted, you know, this law. And then also after, say, you know, some Nissan dealership or other buildings were going in, a lot of trees weren't going back in where we thought there could have been more approved for the trees. Could they paint to a tree bank so that the trees could be placed elsewhere? And so then I just started looking at other boards, the other municipalities had, and it's not really something that had been tackled by the smaller municipalities, but a lot of larger, definitely cities have these things on books.
Did you base this on any particular municipality?
It was an amalgamation of a number. I would say what happened in Vancouver was probably most applicable. And so even the numbers where I picked the 30 diameter inches per acre, that was based off of what they were doing in larger cities, which I think then is actually a little lower end of what we could be doing here, but I went, and I explained this to the planning board and Mike, that I went more conservatively, because we can always start at a lower value and then build up like, because 30 diameter inches per acre, if you're looking at residential law, which is typically going to be half acre, that's 15 diameter inches, and average tree is going to be at least eight inches.
That's like two trees.
You don't have two trees on your half acre lot. I mean, please go plant a tree. That's not a lot of trees. So I didn't think, I guess, planning board grade, Mike can speak for himself, that that was a conservative approach. And I worked with that pretty heavily with Bill Troy, because Bill initially in one of the first drafts was concerned about how this would affect the residential owners. And so a lot of language was changed from the first draft, and Bill looked at it, sort of looking at that 30 diameter inches and then changing. Originally, it read that if you were taking, I think it was more than two trees in a calendar year, and that's when we changed that to 25% of the trees in a calendar year. And basically, that was written because you could just come in year after year and just keep cutting more and more trees, like do someone since the first and then hit it again on January 1st and taking out of trees. So for someone to take out 25% or more of their trees off of their lot is, you got to be thinking about, you know, people aren't cutting down more than 25% of trees. There's really no reason you'd have to do that. And if there is, I mean, there's always going to be unforeseen circumstances and eventualities that we don't think of, then we're only found going to the planning board, and they can say, okay, this is an acceptable reason to do that.
Where's that part of the...
I think it does. Well, again, Mike, I'll speak for this, because I pulled out of this six months ago. I got into the planning board, and when I got into the planning board, I spoke to Lisa and said, I actually don't want to be involved in discussions anymore, because I don't want to...
Oh, I see. It's alternative appliance to minimum tree density requirements.
And everything. In the last version that I gave to the planning board, it did say that, you know, the planning board has authority to, I don't know the exact wording, authority to...
Yeah, I'm reading it.
Yeah, Carolyn, specifically as to the 25% removal of the trees, that is section B1.
I'm looking at it, yeah.
Yeah. That the planning board can grant permission to remove more than 25%.
Hey, sorry to interrupt. Simon, could you step up to the mic to talk? It's just a little muffled sometimes to hear you from the background.
Oh, sure.
It seemed like there was also somebody in the waiting room, maybe. I saw somebody chatted something. I'm not sure if they're still there, but one of the things that I will say about this too, and if it's not clear, it should be cleared up, this is specific for non-residential properties. There is a separate discussion happening at the planning board about residential properties that I'm sure will have similar things, but they will not be the exact, exactly the same. So this is specifically targeted to non-residential developed properties, things like that. And so, I don't know, I don't have the exact one in front of me, because I'm not in my house right now, but that's what this is meant to address.
Well, the removal of the trees is from any tax map parcel.
Yes.
So that would include residential. The minimum tree density is what does not include a small subdivision.
Right, thank you.
Would exclude most residential areas.
Any other questions for Simon?
I'm not really following this whole thing, to be honest with you. Are you, just nuts and bolts, are you saying that you can, the village can go in and tell people they can't cut down trees on their own property?
They're taking out more than 25% of the trees in their lot. And it would also be up to the discretion of, I mean, someone would have to dump someone in. I don't think Mike was driving around specifically looking at who's cutting down trees, but it would, you know, say what happened in bottom of Dark Drive, I know those people down there would have dumped someone in to avoid things like that happening. Is that how you see it, Mike?
Yes, well, so if you take a look, Pat, there are exemptions for the tree removals for a number of things in there too. So it's not just saying, no, you can't. It's, there is a percentage limit, there is a time limit, and there are a number of exemptions to that. So if you look at 14527, bullet B, where it starts with a removal of trees from any parcel, that's where the 25% is. It's within three years. And then it goes into a series of exemptions. And then, like Natalie said, it's not that you can't, it's that if, you know, depending on certain things that you do, and if you, you know, come to the board, the planning board, and, you know, talk about an exemption, that's one thing. There's also the tree bank piece in there, which is another piece of the proposed local law.
Which we need to figure out, if we're going to do this, how that's going to work, because there's got to be a lot of, I mean, I think that needs to be...
You have a tree bank now, right?
No. We do not have people that pay in because they cut down trees.
This is different than the program that the village runs to encourage people to plant trees that they...
It's a tree planting program. We can plant street trees.
Yeah.
And you can pay $100.
Yeah, I know, I know. I thought we also had. Okay.
Any other questions or...
Have we had a commercial property that, you know, raised these issues the way the Dark Drive residential area did?
I never had people come up to me specifically to talk about any specific property other than the one...
There was also the Dairy 1-1, where there was a bunch of tree removals that the planning board was ultimately unhappy with afterwards, actually. I remember that one.
East Point had the lot primarily cleared.
Say that again, please, Mike.
East Point was another example of a commercial development that came in where it was mostly clear cut.
When I was writing this, in my mind, the other one that I was thinking about was the parcel next to Danker Park that was rezoned. If they were coming in there to do a development, would they just come in and clear cut that and stop breath? So there were places like that that were in mind. And again, behind our drive, that got developed, would they just come in and take everything out? Which, I mean, they could with this, or they, but they would have to replace everything, bringing it up to the value of 30 diameter inches per acre. And at that point, I think it would actually be easier, because typically you're planting a four to six diameter inch, four to six inch diameter tree, and then you have to bring it up to 30 inches per acre. It would be much easier, in my mind, I think planning board grade, to leave a handful of existing trees, which typically are going to be somewhere in the age 12, you know, inch range. And it would be preferable to keep existing trees than planting trees, because existing trees obviously established, they're already creating the habitat, they're fully grown, you know, you know they're going to survive, because well, they've got a better chance of survival, because they've been there that long and replanting something. And, I mean, I've seen a lot of examples of where things have been planted, and six months later, they're gone. And that would be hard to enforce, I think, if we said, you know, plant to this density, and then we need to make sure it's still alive in, you know, 30 years.
Mike, when you referred this from the planning board to the Board of Trustees, can you tell me a little bit about the discussion and whether the vote was unanimous, and how, you know, how much, was it vigorous support? Was it support? Was it modest support?
So, and Natalie can attest to this too, because Natalie was there for these. So this was a very collaborative process on the development of this by the planning board. Everybody was involved. We reviewed this in depth while Simon was still on the Board of Trustees, and we reviewed it in depth after he left the Board of Trustees. So it continued, you know, after he left, obviously. We went through multiple iterations. This wasn't, while Simon's gone, we took a look at it for two meetings, and then we moved it on. We discussed it at multiple meetings. We had separate small meetings outside to work on very specific things. I know that Lisa and Natalie also took a very hard look at some of the language and moved things around to make sure they were a appropriate to have in the proposal, and also to make sure that they were in the right place and that it really wasn't, that's the word I'm looking for, it really, the things that were in there that really should be in there, and they weren't going against the kind of some of the driving principles of the village. And it was a unanimous vote when we decided to approve it. There was, you know, we had had so much discussion, there wasn't anything that was brought up as an objection by anybody there at the meeting when we voted on it, or any of the board members, to my recollection.
I would agree with that assessment. There was no objection when it was voted on, and everyone worked together to come to this final draft the board found to be acceptable.
Okay, those are my questions.
Any other comments or questions? The thing that people might not understand is that the minimum tree density requirements, all applicable sites shall maintain a minimum tree density of 30 tree units per acre. That is not 30 trees per acre. It is 30 of the diameter, 30 inches of diameter of trees per acre. So if it's a four inch diameter trees, you'd have seven and a half trees or eight trees. So it's not 30 trees. The one thing that might help is if we could, going back to Don Hartill's comment, if permission is granted by the planning board and the Board of Trustees, is this something that we would want to become involved in, or just let the planning board make the decision?
I think one group looking at it is sufficient.
Okay.
Or it could be and/or, so if they get, maybe they can, if they can't get approval from one, maybe they can get approval from the other, but I don't think you need both.
Yeah, I think that might be problematic.
That's true.
If we do that.
Yeah.
I've never had problems with planning board ever doing, they don't do quick decisions. They're very thorough. But I was just wondering if we wanted to add ourselves. We can leave it as is, I believe. I know that Simon worked hard on this. He himself went through several iterations of this document, trying to get it in this shape. And planning board looking at it, and I was, I was watching several of the meetings where they did discuss this, and they did a pretty thorough job of vetting it and changing it to meet their requirements to pass it on to us. So I really can't make any more recommendations at this time. But I want to make sure that everyone here has spoken before we go to a vote. Jeff, although you cannot vote, do you have any comments related to this?
I had it get unmuted. No, I don't have any comments.
Okay, Jeff, thank you. In that case, I will move the resolution...
Can I just say something real quick? I talked to Mike today, and he says that he, there's already a section in the code that deals with trees that he didn't know about. Natalie, do you...
It does deal with trees, but does this not prevent clear cutting? It's that once a developer comes to the planning board for a subdivision approval, then the planning board can prevent them from cutting down trees. But if someone clear cuts prior to coming to the planning board, there's no recourse in that situation.
How are we going to know, how are we going to know if someone's coming in and clear cutting? Say, you know, we buy a lot, and we just go in and think we're going to clear. Are we hoping that Mike's going to catch it, or...
But there would at least be a recourse to either require them to replant trees or paint to the tree bank.
So we also need to figure out how that tree bank's going to work, because are we setting up, is it just going to go through escrow?
It's going to be a separate escrow bank account.
Okay, because accounting wise, that might be an issue. We have to figure that out.
Okay.
So if we get to that point for the tree bank, and we need to make adjustments to this document, we will do that once we go down that path. This is something new for our village. Excuse me. Don, I see your hand. Don, please step up to the microphone just so it can be on the recording. Thank you.
There seem to be, seems to be a contradiction between the 30 inch thing per acre and the restriction of more than 25% cut to whatever. So that certainly needs to be straightened up.
Well, the percentage goes to the number of trees on a lot to prevent clear cutting. If you have, let's make it eight trees, then you can't cut down more than two trees in a three-year period. And that's for residential, it's for every parcel in the village. The minimum density goes to larger developments to ensure that when construction goes on, trees naturally have to be cut down sometimes, that those trees are either repopulated or paid into the tree bank, and to encourage developers to plan their construction in such a way to preserve as many older trees as possible.
But it rather specifically says 25%.
By number, yes.
Oh, by area.
No, it's by number.
It's by area.
No more than 25% by number of trees are permitted to be removed from any tax map parcel within three calendar year period without the permission of the planning board.
If you have a uniform density, 25% of trees.
Well, that's 25% removal of the number of trees currently on a lot.
Yeah. Because it's a uniform coverage, it's 25%.
It doesn't have to cover 25% of the lot, though.
Okay.
Just to make the clarification.
Yes, if there are 40 trees on a particular lot, you can remove 10 trees wherever you want, but you cannot go and clear, as Don was concerned about, clear 25% of that lot and come along and clear another 25% of the lot, and to eventually get to 100%. It's basically every three years. It's basically, if a development needs to remove trees, they try to stay within the 25% for three years. So I think that it's a matter of interpretation. I agree, but it's, well, I don't think it can be clarified until we see this particular instance of it. I mean, if there's a concern, it would be good to have the owner and Mike or someone, a representative from the village to go help determine what percentage and approximately how many trees. I don't think it's anything that we're going to enforce consistently, because every lot is different, and every use is going to be different. But we, this is an attempt to try to protect the trees and try to have trees planted to replace trees that we've lost. We'll never regain the trees that were lost through other developments, through previous developments beyond what was voluntary. But the intent is to basically keep our village as green as possible, and when development projects do come in, to let them know that trees are a valuable resource within the village, and they're not to be mowed down, and then 25 years from now, we might have some more trees. We want tree, we want the tree removal and tree planting to pretty much be part of the design of the project. And residential, I think we've taken, Simon and planning board have taken a lot of consideration to, so that the commercial, I'm sorry, the residential areas, there are all sorts of exemptions, as Mike mentioned, that if something, if a tree has to be removed for one of these exemption reasons, which so far I haven't seen anything that would have prevented me from removing a tree that was dying or dead or dangerous, et cetera, someone can do that without a problem. But if they're just going to go in and cut down trees to extend their house, say, they would have to consider, are they removing more than 25% of their trees? And if they are, there would be consequences, at least from their standpoint, from the village's standpoint, the consequences would be positive, because yes, the trees are gone, but we're going to replace those with purchased trees, or money to purchase trees and replace them somewhere else in the village. So that's my two cents worth. Is there any other discussion?
I do have one more question, and if, so if somebody's buying a wooded lot to put a house in, and they got to fit that house in that lot, that let's say totally wooded, they would need to take out more than 25% to do that, or are we just not allowing that to happen? Or is that an exemption?
They would have to ask the planning board for permission to remove more than 25% of the lot. They would have to ask the planning board for permission to remove more than twenty-five percent of the lot. And the planning board, in their discretion, can ask for funds to be paid into the tree bank, but do not have to require funds to be paid into the tree bank.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I got that right. Thank you.
That's a good question, Jeff, thank you. Anything else? And I will move the resolution to accept proposal, proposed local law F 2022, Amendment of the Village of Lansing Code zoning law to replace a section on tree conservation.
I'll second.
Carolyn seconds. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to just point out that, you know, it's, it's not pro forma that we accept the recommendations from the planning board, but it's definitely been the village tradition and modus operandi to consider strongly their recommendations and to follow them if we feel appropriate and that the appropriate amount of thought and research has gone into it at that board level, then typically we consider the recommendation and make our decision based on knowing that they have thoughtfully considered the issues.
Thank you. Well, well said. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I oppose. I just don't feel comfortable voting on something I don't really understand. Because I haven't been around the last two meetings and.
That's okay.
I mean, I trust the planning board and all that, but I just don't feel comfortable voting.
That's fine. Okay. Resolution passes by quorum, a majority of the quorum. Thank you. Okay, moving on. The next topic is our deer management program update. And this is also to authorize me to sign the nice New York State D E C deer damage permit application. Baron, did you make the meeting?
I'm sure here.
Okay, good, good, I can, I can see you now. Give us a, give us your report. Tell us what's going on.
Okay, Jody, can I share my screen? Am I unable to do that?
Yeah, just a second.
Okay.
Okay, you should be able to.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for being late with that. I unfortunately caught a cold. Thankfully, it's not COVID that hammered me this summer. So I only submitted this earlier. So here's a little summary that typically I don't do in, in the PowerPoint form. But last year, which ended in March, we took fifty-one deer. I will show the distribution of properties. That's almost thirty fewer than the year before. There are many reasons for, for that, and we can discuss that. You can see the distribution, so the first three months is really important for getting us going. That's when the deer are most active. That's when the participants are most active because it's still warm enough. And then once we pass the Christmas and the New Year's, participation drops down, deer are far less active. And there's a few people that still venture out and are successful, but it's not as successful as it could be. And of course, there are fewer deer because most of them get killed early on. We're still having a reasonably good distribution of what is being killed. Lots of adults, does and bucks, and rather few individuals that we would classify as young of years, so they're less than one year old. And so those are only, only eleven. So we're doing good. You can see that it's a majority of bucks because the bucks are still dispersing. So these are the ones that are still coming into the village. We take a whole bunch of deer or adult does out, but the young bucks are dispersing from areas surrounding the village. Those are the ones that come and say, oh, this may be good living here. We're doing really well with our recovery rates. So sometimes you hear exaggerated stories about how many deer have been wounded. We couldn't discover or couldn't retrieve three deer. Two of them ran onto properties that we didn't have access to and need to respect landowner wishes there. And two of them were pushed out by unauthorized trespassers and, and skiers that pushed deer out after they were shot, and then they were going through the area. The distance that deer ran after they were hit is about fifty-four yards. That's a long-term average, it's around fifty, sometimes it's a couple of yards less, sometimes more. The maximum was a hundred and twenty-five yards, so they don't go very far. And, and a big change that we've seen in the last few years, and I will show you some data on that one, is that crossbows with infrared make a big difference because most of the deer are now night active. Individuals that do not have the ability to shoot after, after dark are really, really, very, very fewer and far between, and they're not very successful. Let's see. I'm trying to change my, my slide, and I'm not going to be able to do that there. So this is the distribution. And there's a whole bunch of properties in here that you see the dash mark. Those are properties that we haven't used in the last year. And you can kind of see, I left all of them in from the beginning of the program that was then a recreational hunting program in '07. Many of those we can't use because they're either too small, or we now use bait. And so we are dispersing the areas where we are operating to have a better coverage of the village. And the D E C is not allowing us to bait within a hundred and fifty feet of a public road. So that has eliminated a lot of areas that before were accessible for us. So that's a restriction that was put on us a few years ago. You can see that there are four properties that are really delivering, so to speak, the majority of the deer. Leopold, Lampard, and, or what is now Novar, Berry on Oak Crest Road, and then the Cornell Business Park. Those are four locations where the participants are using crossbows with infrared. The other ones are not being used, and you can see that the numbers are way down. That doesn't mean that there are no deer there, the deer are there. But the participants are not encountering them or not, are not as good as, and, and taking deer. We can talk more about that if you desire to do that. I can explain some of that, but I don't want to, you know, just overwhelm you with stuff. The map that has been updated a little bit, I took the Beaumont property out because as you just heard, that was clear cut and it's now housing development. I took some other properties out, but it's the distribution of the shooting locations as we have it now. For a moment, the former Miller properties were taken out of the situation, but I'm in discussion with a relative of, of beer who would like to be in the program. I wasn't able to do a Zoom meeting with this individual, but this may come back online for the season because it's, it's a relative. So we'll, I will leave it in for now. But we will deliver, or you will get paperwork, Jody, if that comes back in because it needs to be reauthorized. And then we have one new property that is being proposed for inclusion. This is a lovely one up here north, where it's still in the, in the village. Karen, she may be in attendance, I'm not entirely sure, she wanted to. She can explain some of those. We have rarely had use of these, these properties here along thirty-four for various reasons. So this one would be a welcome addition to be included in the, in the, in the program. So the recommendation really is for the next year to continue to do what we have done, add the property here. I forgot the name of the road. It's, it's the end of a long day with the still little, but that's okay. And get approval from the D E C as soon as possible and continue in the way that we have been operating. This is really at a level of a maintenance now, and we still need to drop the populations down because oaks are still not being able to draw, recruit in the way that we do that. We just, this last week, we were at Lynn's property and measured a bunch of oak seedlings and have some protected ones there that are almost half a meter or two feet tall. If you protect them, the other ones don't make it beyond a foot or so because the deer are browsing even the small seedlings. So that's my recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have in regards to this program.
Questions for Baron? My question, Baron, is, it's, it's always, it's my annual question. When do we know we've killed too many deer?
Never. I can tell you that after fifteen years, we have never killed too many deer. And that's just the limitations of what we're seeing here right now. So if I were to involve you in some of the professional discussions that we have regarding deer management under current regulations that we have, we're not getting to the point where you have forest recovery. Even if we were to have wolves and mountain lions in the area, you will not get wolf, you will get not, you will not get oaks and flowering wildflowers back with the way that current authorization comes from the D E C or any other state wildlife agency. We met, we measured that. What we need to do, to read, to be honest with you, Ronnie, is get regulated market hunting back. That's not in the cards as of yet, so we would need to pay people to actually go and shoot deer. So with the current authorization that we have from the D E C and the limits that are being put on us of when we can do and what we can do, we will never shoot enough deer. And that's not just the experience in the Lansing program, but around the country.
Okay. Another, a question I have also, I did, I tried to do some research in the last few days, but I wasn't very successful. I didn't find the magic string of words that would get me my answer. When you have a controlled area of oak saplings, are you only protecting those saplings from deer, or are you protecting them from all wildlife?
So that depends a little bit on the size that you're doing, right? So you, most of you will be familiar with the tree tubes that you occasionally see to protect from, from deer browse. That sometimes protects from, you know, rabbits or beavers. Will not protect against mice and, and chipmunks and others going in. If we do larger areas, and so some of you may have walked at the lab of O or seen some larger exposures that we have built. In that sense, we are protecting them from deer, but not any other smaller individuals that can fly in or crawl in. So foxes, rabbits, anything that would be a vegetarian or even a carnivore, they will bite little holes in our plastic fences and can still come in and out. That's also the desire that we have by building fences that are not entirely proof for everything, but are somewhat permeable. And occasionally, the deer will breach that, too. That's, that's kind of the desire. So we're not fencing out everything. And for the experiments that we are doing where we follow stuff, we actually can record whether the browse incidence was by a deer or a rodent because the cut angle is different.
Different.
Rodent cuts at a forty-five degree angle, a rabbit or a squirrel or whatever you have. So that's easy distinguishable. We also report whether insects are making a difference or whether diseases like viruses are making a difference.
Yes.
We had a big recruitment event, both at the lab of O and at Lynn's property and some other places around in 2020. And we took advantage of that opportunity by basically putting bird bands around about two thousand little oak seedlings that were recruiting naturally. So we're in the process of following that up because foresters never are interested in these very small seedlings. And then we not make a transition into larger size classes where they're like a foot, two feet, three feet tall, when they become saplings, and the foresters are actually starting to send systems. So we, we're doing that. I can tell you of, we've probably measured seven or eight hundred now. Again, two years after that, we have two incidences of the seven hundred that were cut by rodents, and probably seventy percent of them have been eaten by deer. So as soon as they get beyond a foot or so, the deer coming in and browsing the tops off. And so that's happening at the lab of O, that happens at Lynn's properties. And we have some other areas around Cornell where we're trying to do that. There was one in a lifetime event that Lynn reported. She said she had, she had never seen anything ever before, where basically there was a carpet of young seedlings in her woods. And so we took advantage of that. And so I don't know how long she has been in the, in the village, but for many decades, that has never happened before. And I had never seen anything like that either. But the deer are preventing this from reaching something that would be able to replace the trees that are dying, that are not being cut, but, you know, trees are dying over time.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Baron? Thank you for getting this, the information, Baron, and I hope you feel better. So the, our decision then is pass the resolution to allowing me to sign the, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's deer damage permit application, which allows the deer hunting program to run through this deer season within the Village of Lansing plus three months into 2023. I will move that resolution.
I second.
Susan seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes. Baron, I'll sign this tonight before I leave.
Thank, thank you very much. I alerted Courtney at the D E C office that it is coming in late, hopefully she's expediting that. I appreciate if you have any questions, you know how to get ahold of me.
Yes.
And so thank you very much. I will be, I will be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next topic then is to set a new public hearing with proposed updates to the Greenway Plan. I, I sent everyone the updated version of the plan with the changes that were made, Carolyn made, and Jody found a few errors that we fixed, too. So if, if everyone is okay, I'll, I'll move a, a setting, a public hearing at our next Monday night meeting, which is the seventeenth, for this updated version of the public, of the Greenway Plan. This is the second one. The first one, the, the changes that Carolyn brought up were fairly significant. So I wanted to redo the, the Greenway Plan and, and make it a new public hearing because of those changes. So I appreciate your finding those and raising them, Carolyn. So I will move that we set a public hearing for October seventeenth at seven thirty-five P M.
Oh, wait a minute, are you doing the dedication that morning, that day? Do you want to make it like eight o'clock or something?
Oh, that's true. Okay, that, that's right. So we'll do, we'll, okay, okay, yeah, we'll set it at eight o'clock for that night. That night, that, that same night, we're doing the dedication to dedicate this, this conference room to a certain individual in the room named Don Hartill. And thanks for his many years of service to the village. So we'll do that first, and then we'll have the public hearing immediately after that around eight o'clock. I'll, I'll move that, and I'll need a second.
A second.
Thank you, Susan. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Okay, the next one is a topic, authorized transfer of our ARPA funds in the balance of one hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, one hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty cents from our general fund to our water fund, per our budget that we approved this year to help pay for the Warren and Brown Water, Warren Road and Brown Road water project. So I will move that we authorize that transfer.
I'll second.
We'll let Pat second it this time. Okay, any discussions about those? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Send them the money. Okay, the last topic, official topic for tonight is to consider approving our Solar Farms New York campaign letter and providing the mailing list for distribution. Natalie raised an issue earlier, so Natalie, would you bring that up again, please? Natalie raised an issue earlier, so Natalie, would you bring that up again, please?
Yes, my concern with the letter specifically, not necessarily the program that's been established, is that I'm uncomfortable with the village sending out correspondence on village letter head signed by the mayor endorsing a private company over other private companies that may be in the area that do this thing thing. So the, and the mayor did inform me that this is the second campaign of this nature, though there wasn't a similar mailing sent out last time, at least not on village letter head signed by the mayor. So again, I have no problem with the program itself, just the method of correspondence, I think, is not one I would recommend.
What if we just clarified within the letter? That this is an option and a private company.
I think then you probably need to list other companies, I think.
Or you could say this is the company that currently approached us for this.
Hey, everybody. I'm, I'm happy to offer some advice on.
Hi Noah. Noah, let me.
How's it going, Ronnie? How are you?
This is Noah, speaking is Noah Segal from True Green Capital Management, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And they are the parent company for Solar Farms New York. So Noah can, can help, help guide us through this too. Noah, have you had issues with having other municipalities sign a letter and sending it out to their residents?
So we, we certainly have had the same concern raised. I'd say it's, it's just been with about two, two or three of our municipalities that we've worked with. And the path that we've taken with those municipalities is that we add a sentence and we actually have this form language that's been vetted by these, by these municipalities and their councils, which essentially says that this is a non-exclusive endorsement. We encourage the, the village in this case encourages other companies to offer similar benefits and community solar programs to its residents. And, and they leave it at that. So they make it very clear that this is a company that they're working with, but they encourage all businesses to offer these types of things to their residents.
Would that sound appropriate? Natalie, do you think that would be okay?
It makes me more comfortable.
More comfortable.
Maybe also some of the other language could be edited, like maybe Ronnie doesn't want to call them a leading developer of community solar projects. Maybe, maybe he doesn't want to qualify it in any way, say, one of the options or the developer that approached us or, you know, something like that. I may take that language out also. But I mean, I, I think it's, as long as we make it clear that we're not, well, I mean, there is, that's an endorsement regardless.
Endorsement.
There is an implicit endorsement. So I mean, we just want to make it clear that this is an option that you can follow. Maybe we want to try to rewrite the letter a little bit.
Yeah, we'll probably work on it.
Noah, can you, can you send me a new version of that letter with the sentence that you just quoted? And we can, we can look at that and maybe discuss it at our next meeting. We could do that at our noon meeting on the 13th.
Okay. That's at, that's at 12 o'clock noon on the 13th?
Yes. You don't necessarily have to be there, but if we can work out the, the final wording of the letter, and if it meets the approval of the trustees and our village attorney, then I'll sign it and we'll go forward with it. But if not, we will go forward with the campaign without the letter.
Ronnie, if you want to, you'll be the signature, if you want to rewrite the language, obviously that makes sense, but if you also want me to try to do it for you and then send it to you for your final edits, I would do that.
I will, I will send the copy, I will send the copy of the letter from, the new updated letter from Noah to Jody, Natalie and Carol. I'll, I'll send it to all of the trustees, but Carolyn.
I'm just trying to try to save Natalie's time. I mean, obviously you'd have the final review, but if you're gonna try doing something first.
I think it's final, we'll send it to Natalie. That sounds good. Thank you, Carolyn.
So can I have some clarification on how the program works? He just writes the letter, we give you the letter and you copy it and mail it. Is that correct? There's no cost to the village?
That, that's correct. And I, I'll take a second just to introduce my colleagues as well that are on the call. So Amy Harris is the Director of Marketing for Solar Farms New York, and Eliza Seaver is on the marketing team as well. She is the guru around outreach to communities when it comes to getting these mailers to the right people, you know, make, essentially making sure that these letters will reach, you know, doorsteps. So I invited them to join us tonight. We do have some slides on PowerPoint, so we could, for those that aren't familiar with community solar, or it's just been a while since you've learned about a community solar program, happy to share a screen and we can walk through it. But I know it's already been a, a long night and, you know, I'll, I'll put it out there. If you have specific questions about the program and the community solar offering, we can kind of just tackle your questions rather than, you know, walk through the presentation, whatever you, you think's appropriate.
Approximately, how many slides do you have, Noah?
I, I'd say we can get through it in, in five or 10 minutes if we move fast.
I think that that's an appropriate amount of time.
Okay. All right. I like you.
Share a screen.
Our colleague Connor is on the, on the call as well, but he's not feeling well, so he's not on video. But, so we won't put him on the spot tonight.
Okay.
A lot of guys say aye.
All right. Perfect. Everyone can see this, okay?
Yes.
All right. So in terms of Solar Farms New York, being a leading developer, we like to say that because New York has been, for, for, for solar farms, we do operate in other states, but New York has been our focus since 2018. And specifically Tompkins County has been the hub for where we've really started offering community solar. And when we started doing outreach years ago with Amy and the team, we were focused on that very local marketing. So we actually have about 50 residents in, with a Lansing address who are currently enrolled in solar farms. So we're looking at this as an opportunity to, to work with the village now to do some new outreach because it's been a few years since we've really tried to connect with, with residents again, as more spots have opened up on the existing projects. So the projects are located in Tompkins County, some are in Dryden, some are in Enfield, and, and there's one in Newfield as well. So it's all right in the Tompkins County and, you know, area, not, not far from Lansing. The community solar is an opportunity for residents, businesses, even apartment renters to benefit from the growing renewable energy in New York without actually putting solar panels on their home. The program is actually a subscription program. The state launched this several years ago, and it's really been growing over the last few years more than ever. And residents can sign up for a percentage discount on whatever credits the farm produces and are allocated to their, to their, to their bill. So we'll show you some specific examples so you can really visualize it. And one overarching theme here is that New York has a very, very ambitious goal of reaching 100% renewable by 2040. And community solar is a really new and exciting way that, that, you know, this, this hopefully is attainable. So to walk through the process, where the electrons are actually going, they don't necessarily go to your house unless you live right next to the solar farm. And that's the beauty of community solar, is that the utility essentially is doing an accounting exercise behind the scenes. And every month, we tell the utility how many credits to distribute to all the members on that farm. And for the customer, they're receiving a percentage discount. So if it's a hundred dollars and it's a 10% discount, then they're effectively going to pay $90 for a hundred dollar discount on their utility bill. So that's high level how it works. Amy, if you want to jump in and walk through the billing, as, you know, we have a graphic here, that's an example of what the members are actually experiencing month to month.
Yeah. Hello, I'm Amy Harris, and I'm with Noah, supporting Solar Farms New York and True Green Capital in their efforts to make community solar known on a very broad level, help educate and enroll customers. What you're looking at here is an example of the savings. So customer will still get their NISIC bill, but you could see here that they will get a credit on their NISIC bill. So basically their supply and their delivery fees are credited. And so their NISIC bill will show zero due, and then they will get a subsequent statement from Solar Farms New York, and it will show that same $175, but it will show it as it was a credit on the NISIC bill. Customer will get the 10% discount. And so you will see they save $17.50 on every bill. It will also show cumulative, how much they've saved program to date. And most customers will sign up for auto pay. So that will be either through their credit card or their ACH account. And so the statement that is sent to them will just keep them informed of their savings and keep them engaged in the program. And they also have an online portal that they can go to get information. We have customer service support that is available seven days a week, and they can call and ask questions. Sometimes they call, they're trying to see how the credits on their NISIC bill compares to the Solar Farms bill, the, the Solar Farms statement. There is a lag time, typically one statement between the NISIC bill and Solar Farms New York, and that is all part of the education process that we do with customers. And so as Noah said, everybody can participate, homeowners, renters and businesses. We are offering 10% savings through the end of the year. This program typically is a 5% discount, but we wanted to do a special promotion through the end of the year or mid-December and, you know, to get customers excited and to get them to sign up. And, you know, you know, one thing that's great about this program is customers, if they move, if they decide they don't want to participate anymore, they can cancel with no penalty. The only point that we make to all enrollees is that if you already enjoyed the savings on the solar credits, you are responsible to pay for solar credits. And part of that has to do with the lag that I previously mentioned in terms of the NISIC bill coming out month one, the Solar Farms New York corresponding credit showing the subsequent month.
Can I ask you a question? You say that there's a 10% discount through the end of the year. Does the 10% discount end at the, end of the year? Or is that, once you sign up, you have a 10% as long as you keep your account open and active?
Yeah. Thank you for asking that and clarifying. That was my bad in how I positioned that. Yes, if you sign up through the end of the year, you are signing up for a 10% discount that is locked into your specific account for the next 20 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Great question. And so, you know, here are the requirements, you know, NISIC customer, you can still have a third-party electric supplier and still benefit from community solar. You can rent, as Noah mentioned, or own, it could be a house, it could be an apartment. The only other requirement is that you do not have solar panels on your rooftop. NISIC will not allow you to have solar panels and to participate in community solar. So I, I think a lot of this, we discussed already, we have about 500 spots. We want to fill this by the end of the year. Our goal is to both fill this as well as donate the over $50,000 through our clean energy partner program. And so this would go to the town. And I believe it's $100 for each validated enrollment to the Village of Lansing. So we would be really excited to support the Village of Lansing and to, you know, fill the farms, help residents save money, contribute, you know, to clean energy and to the program.
I have a couple of questions. Do we have a contract or some sort of agreement that says that the 10% lasts for 20 years? The 10% discount?
Yes. The, the, there is a customer contract before anybody enrolls. They, there's disclosure, and then there is a contract, and we require customers to sign the contract.
So if you have a current plan with solar farms, you can cancel anytime, like for example today, and then sign up tomorrow because right now your discount's 5% and then it'll go up to 10%? So if you want that 10% discount and you're a current customer, you should cancel and then reassign yourself?
If I could field this one, just as a point, we can obviously make updates to customer profiles where people are currently subscribed and want to participate at 10%. We're really only looking for people to let us know that they received this letter if it is approved by the town. And then absolutely, our CSRs will update the customer profile to represent a 10% savings, and that goes into effect.
Did you give me a phone number of the CSR in particular that's going to do that? Because I have a feeling if that phone call's made, that's not going to happen. So like, for example, your phone number?
So I don't actually answer the phones directly, but all of our CSRs will receive this messaging. They are very well-trained and have full pages of notes. We have our calls present with a whisper so that the CSRs are aware of what program everybody's calling for, so that they're aware that this will be a special offer.
Carolyn?
See, well, I'm gonna write your name down, but I'm writing your name down. I'm gonna say Eliza said.
Carolyn?
Yeah, you know, the, obviously the.
Remember, we have a recording.
Yeah. Obviously, the, the intent of this, you know, and, and because we've talked about this internally, internally, you know, it's no different than, you know, a tell, a cellular phone company or a bank offering a special offer to new customers. And that's our intent. You know, i- if customers do call us, as Eliza said, and they say that they're going to cancel, we try to save customers, right? We're, we're looking to do the right thing by the program, we're looking to do the right thing by the customers. We're obviously not looking for anybody to game the system, right? But, you know, as Eliza said, we're very customer-focused, and we want to keep program, customers in the program over the long term.
And with regard to this letter, though, the last line of the letter just says additionally, Solar Farms New York will donate $100 to the village to put towards clean energy initiatives. I think that we need to change that language and just make it clear that it's $100 per new customer, if you don't mind.
That's a great, that's a great addition.
Because the rest, that's not really clear at all. It just sounds like it's a hundred dollars. Okay.
Yeah. That's a great addition. And I, and I wanted to comment on one of the earlier comments about, you know, using the Village of Lansing and the mayor's logo, you know, on the letter. You know, we have been, you know, as Noah said, doing marketing and supporting the Solar Farm New York efforts for many years now, probably over three years. And, you know, we have had a lot of success, you know, with direct mail explaining the program, et cetera. But for the few communities, the handful of communities that have agreed to send out a letter with the town's logo emblem or the mayor's signature, it's gone a long way. And one of the critical reasons why it has been the most effective communication is that community solar is not very well-understood, and customers have doubts. What is this? Is it real? Is it too good to be true? That's one of, a very common statement that we get, is it too good to be true? And coming from the town with the town's endorsement goes a long way in terms of building trust. And that is really what it all comes down to, is trust. And so, you know, for that reason, you know, if, if we are able to use. Um, and so, you know, for that reason, you know, if, if we are able to use, you know, the, the logo or the mayor's signature, et cetera, it really does go a long way um, in terms of building awareness, building credibility and trust for community solar.
I, I have one more question. To participate specifically in the Village of Lansing's program to benefit the village, does the, a property address have to be in the Village of Lansing?
So, Eliza, can you talk to, you know, the territory?
Uh, certainly. Uh, so the town and village of Lansing are both pretty close. I, I had a little bit of difficulty in parsing out exactly what uh, portion of the zip codes were technically within the village proper. Uh, because I think it comes down to the carrier out, the full nine-digit zip to identify specific residents within uh, the village. Um, absolutely, if you guys are open to having a wider audience be applicable for this and allowing us to send it to both, um, then I would say that anybody who was eligible would be able to participate at this offer. Uh, historically speaking, previous municipal partners only want to send it into their township proper. Um, so that's just been the kind of standard operating. But if you guys are willing to have us mail to both the village and town of Lansing, uh, we're absolutely happy to widen that mailing list and honor this offer for everyone who enrolls.
You were talking more about your other property, right?
Yeah.
I just want to know if the promo code applies. I already have it on two.
We'll use a specific promo code here, right? So that it's even easier for us to identify when we process the enrollment that someone's participating under this offer. Um, but yes, right, provided that you have the promo code, you could enroll both properties with it or update both properties and it would be honored.
That Mike. I was not thinking about specifically, but I was thinking if, if businesses could participate, the business owner or the billing address for a commercial property might be in the village, so they would receive the letter. And they might call asking if they could, they have several properties, some in the village and some outside of the village. And uh, so that would answer that too. If they use this, uh, our, our Lansing, uh, L A N promo code, then you would work with them to include several properties in. Is that correct?
That's correct, provided that there were individual meters for those properties and that the meter usage measured at over one thousand kilowatt-hours annually, which typically most do, unless you have like a, a singular bulb over your garage and your garage has its own individual meter. Uh, accounts are going to be eligible. Uh, the only stipulation I'll provide to that is that it's easiest for projects to enroll uh, commercial entities that operate at a residential rate as opposed to the standard commercial rate. But Noah might be able to provide you guys more detail on that.
Okay.
Okay. Do any of you know how much money you've currently donated to the village for their clean energy initiatives?
I, I was looking at that earlier and it looks like fifteen accounts, which would be fifteen hundred dollars has been donated to, to the village. And that was from the campaigns that we had done, I want to say twenty nineteen, late twenty nineteen.
And where are two of them?
Sounds, that sounds about right.
I think we could, we could probably uh, break that record. I don't know about, about the rest of you, but um, how many, how many households are there within the village?
There's about eight hundred-ish that I got a list of all the businesses and residents in the village. So over eight hundred.
Okay. I got a question. Does that count for condos also?
Yes, it's, it's really anyone within NISIG territory. So if, if folks who live within the village have, like you're saying, businesses or cabins or you know, any other meter that they're responsible for in another community within NISIG territory, then we can find a place for them on, on a project. We, we have some limitations on whether the meter has to be local. But for the most part, we are able to take anyone from NISIG and find some project for them because there are projects now that are intermodal. And you don't have to live just within the county or the surrounding counties um, in order to enroll, enroll in the program. But that's getting into the nitty-gritty, but to say the least, we, yeah, we have flexibility. If you live all the way up in the Adirondacks, if you got a cabin up there, uh, we have a project that we would be able to put you on as long as
That's what I was gonna say also was, uh, you only have so many subscriptions that you can sign up for, for this one farm. And I was gonna say, you know, if we put it out to other people outside the, the village, we might be using up. I, I would, I would want to make sure that we presented it to everybody in the village for, for the first shot at it. And then if it came out, but they wouldn't necessarily be taking up a subscription of, of a farm that would be supporting our village. Am I correct in saying that? Does that make sense?
That's correct.
We haven't, yeah, I think we have enough spots open to cover everybody who's interested. Um, and if it was oversubscribed, as Noah mentioned, we have other projects that we could put people on and guarantee them the same savings and make sure that the Village of Lansing was credited for the hundred dollars.
Okay, okay. And just, I, I, I'm, I'm all for this. I just got done taking the class at the University of New Hampshire, the inclusive. And it's been, and I'm all wound up about this. This is fantastic.
Great.
Can you ask if the town? Is the Town of Lansing also doing this? Do you know?
So we, we haven't spoken, or at least I, I haven't directly spoken with anyone from the, from the town. So I, 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 I'm curious what your thoughts are and if that makes sense to coordinate this with the town. We, we certainly have enough spots on our farms across New York State to run a campaign with both, both leadership.
Well, the village is within the town. So I was just wondering if they were already doing it, which the village people are also town residents.
Mm-hmm. Do you think it would make sense to broadcast the message to the entire Town of Lansing?
There's no reason to.
You would have to go through the town for their, their supervisor to sign a letter for you, et cetera. It's, it's a, it's a larger, it's a larger audience, obviously, than the village. Uh, we're about a third of the, of the, of the, the town total, so roughly a third. So you might, you, I would recommend that you at least approach them and, and see what they think. It won't hurt a, at all. If you don't ask, you'll always hear no, but if you ask, you might hear.
Okay. Would, would you, would you recommend? Would, would you recommend that we um, pilot it, um, roll it out with the village? And then, you know, they'll see our success and then um, go to them?
You can use this as an example as you're talking with them, I guess, but I don't know how long that process would take with them. It might eat, eat up a lot of time between now and the end of the year.
Yeah.
So something to think about in the future at least, but it certainly wouldn't hurt to contact them. I, I think a lot more people now are, are becoming more interested in, in solar energy as the uh, natural gas and gasoline prices are um, on a roller coaster ride. Uh, usually, we're going up and up and up. At some point, we might come down, but I don't know how far. But it wouldn't hurt. And we have a question from Don Hartel, who's in, who's here live. Don?
Why is the delivery charge included since NISIG still has to deliver?
Why is the delivery charge included since NISIG still has to deliver was the question?
So NISIG is still involved in this program in terms of the credits that are being produced. You know, they're, they're still getting paid for this electricity. But it's at a discount. So there's still, so if, if we look at the residential versus the commercial rate, if we were to build the solar farm and just sell it to a commercial entity, then we would have to sell at a very low rate. But because we're producing um, through the community solar program that NISIG is supporting, we can offer a residential rate at a discount. And I, there, there's still fees that will pay NISIG for managing the program.
The answer was exactly the same as a NISIG bill.
Yeah, they're, they're not being completely removed from the, from the process.
So the delivery charge is?
How much is the delivery charge?
That, third, well, it depends on your rate.
Yeah. My experience with the program is that I save a couple of dollars every month. It's not more, but it's not an enormous savings, but it, it, it doesn't cost more to do it.
No, I, I mean, I agree. Yes.
Like literally a few dollars, like less than ten.
But ev- every penny counts.
Mm-hmm. And now it's gonna be ten percent.
That'll be even more.
Now it's gonna be six dollars.
It could be.
One of the
Yeah. And it, that, I was just gonna say, that is true, you know, to, obviously, the, the amount you save is, depends upon the size of your utility bill. One of the things that um, has held true over the past few years, you know, we've done a lot of research and there's a secondary research out there as well. We've done a lot of testing and communications. And while the discount is important, what's most important to enrollees is the ability to um, help um, contribute toward the goal of sustainability and renewable energy. So um, yeah, you're, you're right about, you know, for some people, it's just a few dollars every month. Um, but you know, that is one of the reasons why we show the program to date savings. If you've been in the program a few years, you know, you probably saved, you know, a few hundred dollars.
Right. Another, another reason that, that uh, the um, C S E task force, which Simon, Simon actually uh, uh, basically guided us through the first campaign. Uh, another thing that's very important to us is that the, the Solar Farms New York, these projects, we're getting our, uh, we're getting our electricity from local uh, solar farms within, within the Tompkins County region. So we're helping to employ uh, uh, local residents. And uh, that was another reason that it's, it's, it's close by. We're not buying solar panel, solar energy from Utah or Mexico or Pennsylvania. It's all from within our region. So that was another selling point for us.
I just wanted to add that as you, um, the, the committee is reviewing the letter and giving us recommendations. One of our requests is that um, when we do communications, a lot of times, um, it takes multiple mailings, you know, for a customer or potential prospect to actually see and respond. And what we typically do is send a mailing. And then we oftentimes send the same mailing, the same communication to anybody who did not enroll after the first one. The exact same communication, except on the outer envelope, we put the word reminder. And we do see a lift in response. So if um, the request is if you consider in, in your comments and your approval process, whether we can um, get approval for um, sending the letter um, twice. Um, once, you know, as, as it is finalized. And then the second time, the exact same communication with the word reminder on the outer envelope.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh, we won't be voting on this tonight. We'll discuss it. We'll consider it at our noon meeting on the thirteenth. And in the meantime, uh, Carolyn and I, and eventually Natalie, would get involved in this letter and see if we can't get a better version out and consider everything that we've discussed tonight. So I appreciate everyone being here from True Green. Thank you a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome to stay, but you're welcome to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next topic is mayor's comments. I really don't have anything for tonight. Um, so I will just go around the table. Pat, do you have anything for tonight?
No.
Jody? I don't, you, you don't have anything?
No, I don't, I don't.
I have the summary of the planning board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so uh, David Beers came to the public comment. He wasn't on the agenda, but he wanted clarification with regard to the path issue. Um, as we talked about with, when we were talking about the Greenway Plan, um, we explained to him that if he wants a five-foot-wide path, it would remain undedicated to the village or then possibly being asphalted. And he had kind of been under the impression from the beginning of his project that the village required public pathways through the property. And so now he was sort of rethinking the kind of use of the paths um, in a way that he had currently thought about it before. The planning board didn't have an agenda item, so they didn't make any decisions. But it is something that we might want to think about is um, just the idea of there being public pathways and private developments or not, you know, just something to think about. Um, the, the Dar Drive property of note, the one, the clear-cutting one, has come back with some more subdivisions. One of the areas has a pond on it. So that makes it a little more complicated. Um, but you know, they're back, uh, just to keep subdividing that property that's already been cleared. Um, there was a T-Mobile um, antenna change sort of discussion, just not super code-heavy. And um, Natalie had discussed a little bit about the clarification of using the word conditional in the preliminary plot uh, language that she wanted to clarify. And, and people talked about that. And then at the very end, Mike talks about the fact that he's, wants to start moving forward in, before the end of the year with the solar law and the tree law, which we just moved forward with, and then the short-term rental law. Um, with regard to the solar law, it's been sitting around for so long that now the model code, which I had based it on, has been revised. So Mike's really just gonna write, rewrite the whole thing based on the new, I mean, it's fine. I mean, it's complicated. It's well, you know, it's like when you're looking at that tree law, you're kind of like, oh, I wish it was simpler. But when you realize, when you're writing the law, that if it's simple, it's not clear.
Yeah.
So, so then the, then it gets quite long. And so Mike did think that with the, with the, with the solar law, there were some places, if he took the new structure, or he could get some clarifications with breath, with a little more breadth, but it's probably gonna still be something that has like a lot of detail because it really doesn't clarify. But he was am- ambitious, are you still there, Mike? About wanting it to be revised in twenty twenty-two. So if so, then we will see it.
That's still my goal.
It does seem ambitious. It's already so cold out, but you know, I really hope to. I would love to see it before the Board of Trustees in twenty twenty-two. That's my goal as well.
Mike, if you need anything from me uh, uh, to help, just let me know.
Great, thanks, Arnie.
You're welcome.
And I signed up for Au- August, no, September and October. So I will be reporting for the next month also on the planning board.
Thank you, Carol. I, I guess there was a co- a comment I should have made is be sure and read Jody's email with links to our required training. Uh, and Mike discussed for the planning board too, uh, it's gotta be done by the end of this month. So you can, you can link and sign up. Basically, you just send an email to the person giving the course and they will send you a Zoom link to the date and time that you, you sign up for. So I've already got mine. So everyone needs to do that. It's a requirement. It's a state law that we
I was gonna ask at the end of the meeting, Jody, if I have any credit. You no longer need training. Yeah, that's what I thought. On the Board of Trustees, Board of Trustees members do not need training. Oh, okay.
So this is
Well, you need to, you need to do the mandatory airborne path. Okay, hey. Yeah. You have to do those and you have to do the mandatory sexual harassment. But you do not need the extra four hours every year in topics relating to But I did these, right? You have these? You have to do them annually. Didn't, but did I do them this year? Nope. You sure? I really feel like I just did it. Okay. I know, I, I'm just gonna do, but it was
We all feel that way, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, do it for another organization also, so I actually did just do it. Well, and on the form, if you've already done the sexual harassment with someone else. Oh, I did. And put who, I mean, there's a, just read the form. Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
If you think you've already taken it. If you can prove that you've already taken it, then you can
I mean, I can only swear to it. I have no other, I have no other proof. Okay, sexual harassment. All right, I made myself a note. Thank you. It's right in your pile. It's here. In this pile. My to-do list, this is my to-do list. Okay, thank you. I moved to adjourn.
Okay. I will move to adjourn, I need a second.
I second.
Two seconds, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say bye.
Jody, I don't think this is mine. You took mine and added stuff into it. Sorry.